If anyone here want to sign up to speak? If you do, you need to sign up, Ms. Marie. Or we're fixing to get into that part of the agenda. And there's a place later on at the end of the agenda you can speak if you want to. So Ms. Maria, sign you up. Indivision delegation wish to address the commission and the first on the 4A is 4H, youth delegate to the NCACC Annual Congress, Shanita Hayes. You'll please help her get to the front.
Good evening, my name is Shanita Hayes. I'm 16 years old. I attend Eastland High School. I've been in 4A for four years. And in the past four years, I've learned a lot about leadership, community service, and how to be, have a healthier living. I just came to say today that I've been chosen to attend the Youth Voice in August for the county committee meeting. I look forward to seeing the youth delegate, the county commissioners, there at our breakfast Saturday morning. And 4A, we have summer fun programs that we do during the summer for kids five through 18. And some of the summer fun programs that we do are robotics. We just had a robotics camp last Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday. And we built robotics. We got little robots with Legos. And they, North Carolina A&amp;T provided us the laptops and the equipment to build the robotics. It's a really fun thing for kids to do during the summer. And we have two new 4H clubs. It's one in Lisbon and one in Clarkton. We have two participants who are going to the state level presentation in September. Their names are Ariel Staiton and Luke Barber. Lastly, I would like to thank you for letting me speak today. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Our next item is a conservative request regarding a proposed solar farm with Walter Campbell.
Chairman, all we're asking is that the planning board has made a recommendation to the council to release this property that we own off M&amp;M Street. We ask you to act upon that request.
Who else has signed up?
Mr. Jerry McCoy.
I speak on behalf of the people from, that live on the peanut road, from Walmart to the bypass, and also from Martin Luther King, from Newtown to the bypass. We went to the town council and we pleaded with them, begged them not to let this happen in our residential area out there. Not enough research has been done on this. The study that I done, they probably found out that these inverters give off radiation. And there's some problem that we have there with getting cancer from this. The other thing about the children in the community, ADHD, rabbit spreader ADHD. And I think the other one was the, the question was, what was the worst-case scenario for your solar farms concerned? They said if somebody go into the fence, try to steal copper, might get electrocuted. We all been children. We all been children that were disobedient. Might have told us not to go cross the fence, go into an area or whatever. But children will spring out a little bit. And what would stop a child from going in there hitting the same wires? There's quite a few children in that neighborhood. And I plead to Commissioner Knight, as a minority, the burden of proof is always left on us. We have to prove everything. We ask tonight that you not let us have to prove with the innocent lives of our children, of our seniors, being sick and not know why they're sick. We ask you tonight not to let Blaine County after 20 years become another Flint, Michigan. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, if I may, I have a question or two. Your request is for us to ask the town of Lisbon to reconsider?
I'm asking you to act upon the recommendation of the planning board. That's what was asked of the planning board, to ask the town to take this property out of the zone. ETJ.
Is that what I said, or you saying something different?
Pretty much the same.
Because we cannot take it out of the ETJ.
No, you have to ask the town to do it.
So you're asking for commissioners just to vote on whether we carry it back to and ask the town to reconsider?
That's correct, yes.
Is the proposed plan financially still on the table for that community?
Yes.
Does the community understand what that proposed plan is?
We have not talked, we have not talked to the community at all, so.
Do you want me to share it?
Yes, sure, I'd be fine.
The proposal from the group of investors is it's a 40-year lease. And you correct me if I'm wrong. It's a 40-year lease for that solar farm. Those investors are willing to put $20,000 a year into a trust fund. And that trust fund will be governed by people in that community. And it'll be set up by legal, and you'll be guaranteed that money for 40 years. And then that committee, are you gonna listen or not? Then that committee will decide how that $20,000 a year is spent. If your neighbor needs a roof, you can put a roof on her house. Okay, I'm just telling you what the proposal is. So.
Mr. Chairman, let me, if we're wrong, if they don't see how it can happen, or they don't think it will happen, we can write it in the lease and make it part of our lease that that be done. So therefore, if it's not done, our lease is no good. So it has protection to these people.
Yeah, I'm not telling you just to tell you that because I don't have a dog in that farm, I'm just telling you what's on the table for that community. That's $800,000 going into that little small community for 40 years, so you decide how you're gonna spend the $800,000. I just want to make sure you understand what's on the table.
My concern is we get more people with cancer going for that paper.
It is absolutely true. Solar farms have any pollution at all. In fact, this class line is a totally 100% green energy.
Okay.
I understand what you.
No, no, we're not gonna get into argument here.
I don't wanna argue, but we done, I done the research on it, they say it's inverted, where the sunlight goes into, take it over to electricity. That gives off radiation. And they cause cancer. And after those 40 years or whatever, after they use that farm, that land will be left empty. No good for anything.
Okay. Any questions on the board, Mr. Cargill?
I've got one concern, and I think before we look into even consider something like this, I'm hearing propositions being made, I'm hearing what's best interest. I'm just looking at the legality of even crossing over into the ETJ. I don't understand that, and that's been confusing to me. I've been on the board for a while. And I was on the Lisbon Town Planning Board, and I was on Blaine County Planning Board. And I just don't understand how you supersede the jurisdiction of one precinct or one voting district over another. I don't see, I'd like for Mr. Johnson first to come back, what we think about this, is to look at the legality as to what we are doing, if we trying to cross over jurisdictions on who owned property is, who has rights to property. Because it's just totally confusing to me.
The legal from our lawyer has been sent to you.
I've seen that, but I'm just, what I'm saying is that there's some things that need to be discussed, and this, and open up the people for transparency on this.
Let me say again, all they're asking us to do is to approve, they're asking us to send a letter to the town of Lisbon to reconsider their proposal. To take it out of ETJ. That's all they're asking. There's $800,000 on the table for that community, and there's $12,000 county tax dollars there. So anybody got any other questions?
I'll make one comment, and I share this with the concerned citizens. If you live in the county, and I think the county manager can speak on this, but we were told just a matter of a couple of weeks ago, two counties, about a half a billion dollars that affects their budget and their funding in the counties as some of the farming of the future is solar farms. I woke up one morning to see one being built across the street from my house just two or three years ago. Number one, I didn't hear of being built. Number two, it's up and running, and I don't hear it running. And you got to climb the pole 35 feet and get electricity. And I'm not saying that to pass an opinion, I'm just saying, I did a little research on it for myself, because I didn't have a voice like y'all have at night, it was just there. And I live out before you get to the highway patrol station, it's on the Clark's Farm. And, but I do share that with you. Especially with what you got offered on the table. But there again, I think it's got to come through the town. And my concern right now for most of it, I think they've already changed their ordinance that it's not accepted if it stays in the limits unless they go back and change their ordinance again. So you got several things would have to be considered. I just want to voice that opinion, that I had to face it and saw it, was concerned just like you, but did a little research. But we won't privy to a meeting to discuss it.
Yes, sir.
Part of the farming operations of the day.
One last thing. I've looked into this too, and talked with some other counties and looked with the state association. Various counties, several counties have put injunction to even stop solar farms from coming into their counties, because they're everywhere. They're overflowing, there's too many of them, and they have this complete, this stop, allowing people to build solar farms in their areas, simply for the reason that they said that when you set that precedent to start putting them in residential areas and close proximity to people, then you have to do that with everybody. And anybody that has vacant lands trying to cluster these things up. So Robinson County for one has stopped them. You cannot even put one in Robinson County, because there's so many of them being clustered around residential areas. So I don't think we need to get in putting solar farms in residential areas, not here at Blaine County with all this land we got around here.
These solar farms have to be built on special land. You have to be able to tie into the power company, or your land don't qualify. This piece of land just happens to qualify. I personally think it's a good deal for Blaine County, $12,000 R tax, and I think it's a good deal for $800,000 to do in that community. And that's just my opinion. So I entertain a motion. Next, circles. Much in my, Dr. Rock, our theme ongoing, sacrificed by Mr., theme ongoing, sacrificed by Mr. Bullitt. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your right hand.
So you're telling me, I want to clarify before we begin to saying that you're not gonna tell the county, Lisbon Town, now you're gonna take over this issue from Lisbon Town?
No. That's not even the point.
We're just giving it back to them.
All we're doing is commissioners.
Let them make that decision again. They'd already denied it, but we're asking them to look at it again.
All we asking them to, send a note to the town, ask them to reconsider their motion.
Their motion.
Their decision.
Their decision around ETJ. So that motion fails, I hear a motion to approve it. To approve the letter being sent to the town of Lisbon. To ask them, much by Mr. Triv, say goodbye. Mr. Britt, any discussion?
I'd like to say that it's fine with all of this land in Blaine County. How many square miles are we? What about 30, 40?
About 870.
Okay, there's a lot of land out there. You're telling me they keep trying to place someplace else to, in the county to put?
But what you said now, is let the town, let the town deal with it.
Yeah.
You just said let the town deal with it.
Oh, that, that was my motion.
Let the town deal with it.
Okay. You voted against my motion was for us not to disintegrate to the county.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we want the.
Well, that was my motion.
Do I send it to the town?
Yeah, no, that's my.
That ain't the way I understood your motion, I'm sorry. So the motion on the floor is for this board of commissioners to ask the town of Lisbon to reconsider that, the solar farm for the ETJ. And save it by Mr. Britt. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, ayes have it. We'll send a letter to the town of Lisbon asking them to revisit their decision. The board of commissioners did not make any decision whether to go through it. Okay, thank you. Matters of interest, commissioner, do you have anything?
I got one thing that I would like to, to inform the board, that we have, and those funds that I asked to, went out seeking to pay for the funding, for the photographs, for the pictures, for the county commissioners to be posted throughout the county, those funds have been submitted to Mr. Martin. And Mr. Kenny Armstrong has agreed to do a setting where he'll come in and take the photos at no cost. So this total project will be at no cost to the county of Blaine County. Everything has been donated through public funds or through this, somebody donated.
Mr. Martin, you give us update on what all you received and your plans to move forward with this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cargill brought in a check Friday, now lunchtime, we just had lunch, for $750.
That's a previous.
Right. Understanding is that'll, that'll pay for the framing and the.
Okay, what are we gonna do in the years to come? Who's gonna pay for it in the years to come?
Ms. Britt has agreed, and from what I, from my understanding, whenever we take our setting again, those pictures would need to be made available to Ms. Britt, so that she can publish those pictures during election, whenever there's a change on the vote. You would just have it during our regular settings, whoever does those, would this be a part that you would send a copy of that setting to Ms. Britt? And she said that she would reframe or do something, somewhere she'll put, she'll put it back in motion at no cost.
Okay, can I, just, can I get a motion by someone, when it starts costing the county tax dollars, then we revisit it?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas, make a motion, thank you, Mr. Triv. Any discussion? Anytime it costs the county to do this, Mr. Martin, he has to come back to the board before we do it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Dr. Phil. Blaine County School, Ms. Sharon Penny.
We've got a list of projects that we'd like to get approved to use the passive sales tax appropriation for.
Much pleasure, the board. Much by Mr. Cargill, much by Mr. Bullitt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Penny.
Thank you.
Animal Control, Mr. Mike Jackson.
Yes, sir. We have the information in front of you, we have an issue with parvot at our shelter. Our bed of record has recommended that we give a booster shot two to three weeks after intake for the parvot that we have. This will cost an additional $5, we would raise the vaccination fee $5.
Motion by Ms. Britt. Thank you, Mr. Cargill, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what would be the total cost?
I think it's $45 now, but for the vaccination, we'd go up $5 to $25. $15 to $20, sir.
Okay.
It's a matter of, if you don't do it, the dogs are gonna die. You know what I mean, it's not a.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Y'all have a wonderful night.
Blaine County Word District, interdication to go on the water board. Good, say goodbye to Mr. Bullitt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider yourself water board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'll make this quick. The next step in the process of phase four is to approve the engineering contract. Sorry. The next step of phase four, which was funded back in May, your May meeting, the next step in the process is to start the engineering on the project. And we presented your manager and your attorney with the standard form of agreement used for these projects. Forgive me, because it is a thick document, it's the thickness of the documents required by USDA, so it's not something we document. All of the figures and the scope are consistent with the reports and the funding documents that were approved. So I would ask that you consider, consider approving it. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I make a question, Mr. Campbell, this is, much by Mr. Cargill to approve, second round, Dr. Rock, theme ongoing, discussion?
Yes, this is to do that annexation of the complete project that we put in phase with the $1 million grant.
That is correct.
Got that complete layout, everything together.
That is correct, yes.
And legally has already reviewed paperwork?
I believe so, I'll let them speak.
We've already approved this contract, but you still have to approve it.
Okay. Much to approve. I kind of mentioned, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, this is a giant step to provide water to more Blaine County residents. It's a positive thing that this board of commissioners is doing around water. I entertain a motion to exit water board. Mr. Bullitt, say goodbye, Mr. Dallas. All in favor, say aye. Consider yourself out of water board, Ms. Lisa Coven.
Good evening, hope everybody's doing well today. We'll make this real short and sweet. As you know, we have finished June 30th, so we have completed another year in with finance. We are still collecting revenues, however, for certain revenue departments, like in taxes, the SAs, health department, some of the bigger departments like that, as well as EMS. So right now, at the end of June, we had collected 96% of the budget, and we had spent 91 in the jail. As you know, we've spent right now 87%, and I just got approval today for some more that we're still gonna spend, so we're on track to finish that pretty soon. Solid waste, we've collected 110%, and spent 91%. Versus telephone, we've collected 84%, spent 90. And water, we have collected 106% and spent 95. Does anybody have any questions about that?
On the jail, are we on track to finish at cost or below cost?
Right now, based on our projections, it looks like it's gonna be below cost.
Below cost.
Don't you think?
Well, listen, this guaranteed maximum.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably what Ms. Coven referred to is, we did have a loan, a margin.
Yeah, for that contingent.
Yeah, that was well beyond the guaranteed maximum price.
Right.
The guaranteed maximum price is in place, and at this point, I don't think we foresee any issues coming into that process.
Mr. Chairman. One category, you say you collect 110%.
106%. 110 on solid waste. That was, we over-collected on investments. Thank goodness our earnings are coming in stronger. And our operating revenues were underestimated, so we collected, over-collected on those as far as what the budget was.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you.
Ten Department of Social Services, Ms. Vicki Smith, Director, Services for the Elder and Disabled.
So I'm gonna do a quick presentation for you on how they're coordinating to service our older adults and their sisters.
After the approval of the proclamation to observe May 15th through June 6th, 15th, we had a meeting. And from the meeting, we were discussing the elder abuse in Latham County, we decided it would be a good idea to come and help educate the county of how we are the Health and Human Services agencies, how together we are be able to keep the elderly and disabled in their homes and in the community safe, as long as possible, as long as they can stay in their homes safely. And also to live in the community healthy, with an excellent quality of life. So what we're doing tonight, each, there's a representative from each of our Health and Human Services agencies, and we're gonna give you just a small, smidgen of our services and how we're collaborating together for our elderly and disabled in the county. Kelly Robinson, Division of Aging Director.
Hey. Like she said, I'm Kelly, I'm fairly new to the Division on Aging, I've been there for about a year now. And some of the services that we provide is we have a senior center where we have activities, but we also do education and health promotion. And it's a place where our seniors can come and socialize with one another. We also have six nutrition sites throughout the county, and we do home-delivered meals to homebound clients that live within the city limits of Lisbon Town. We have frozen meals that we deliver, or that clients, family, or friends can come pick up for them if they are homebound and live outside of the city limits. We have a Level 1 in-home aid service, which basically is chore work, like housekeeping, that kind of thing. They can make small meals and things like that for our seniors. For transportation, we have BARTS, and BARTS does both Medicaid-paid transport, and they also do general and medical transport. We also have a housing and home, minor home improvement program, where we primarily focus on ramps, and we also do replace broken appliances and things like that. And then we have our Senior Health Insurance Program, which is also on a ship, where we do private counseling with seniors who are either new to Medicare, or who need to get a Part D drug plan in place. The way that we collaborate with our sister sites, HHS, is that we always, if we have any suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation, we refer that to DSS. We also refer special assistance in home, which is for some of the more major housing and home improvements that we can't, we don't have the funds to take care of. We also, if we have clients that we feel like need to apply for Medicaid, we send them to DSS. And we work with CAP, if we have some clients that we feel like need to be on the CAP services. And finally, if we have clients that we feel like they may need some crisis assistance, we refer them over to DSS for that. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What are your crisis assistance?
If we have, well, with the crisis assistance, I think DSS could probably speak to that a little better. But for us, if we have, like, they do commodities, and they'll go, you know, pick up different commodities, and some of the, I guess, basically your crises, whenever you have people that just really need someone to step in and intervene.
Mr. Chairman, how do you inform the public of your available services? Like you got someone out in the county, living out in the rural area, and need these services, how do they know?
And that's one of the things, that's where we step in with Bladen Online and the Bladen Journal, we try to get stories published. And we also have a newsletter that we're gonna start publication, I believe, next month, if not this month. And it was a free service that we got, where they came in and they solicited money from the different organizations within the town to go out, and they'll go out to all of the different nutrition sites and notify them of things that go on in the site.
Is that a mailing list going to the citizens, or just?
Yes, sir.
To the citizens of Glendale?
To the seniors of Bladen.
Postine?
Yes.
Not to the site, but could you get home?
They can get, they will go, some of them will be delivered to the nutrition sites where they can go in and pick those up. But we also have a list.
Good, okay, awesome.
Ms. Kim?
Yes.
Whether a person has been abused, has an arrest, or disbarred, and they need to have a service, if they had to be removed from that location, do we have fund that's available to accommodate that? How do we move those people and deal with that issue?
That's where DSS steps in.
You can answer it then, if you want to.
We don't have a lot of emergency money to solve emergency situations. A lot of times when we get in to a position where someone really cannot stay in their home, or cannot stay alone at that point in time, generally, our social workers have to. really do some quick hustling, you know, to work out either a payment source for them to be placed. We have to work with the doctors to get the information from them that's required, and it's very difficult on an emergency basis. But a lot of times, when we find ourselves in those situations, there's some pretty extreme medical needs that are also present during that time, and we're able to move them into the hospital setting sometimes. So that helps on a short-term basis, but we do not have a lot of resources for emergency placement.
Does Mel have any kinds of assistance for that type of situation?
Not normally.
All your slots being filled, is there a certain number of slots that you have available?
We have waiting lists, yes, sir.
So all your slots are filled?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara McLauren from the Community Alternatives Program.
Hello, my name is Barbara McLauren. I'm here to report on the Community Alternatives Program, or CAP. CAP is a North Carolina Medicaid home and community-based program for disabled adults and children. And, excuse me?
I said amen.
No. And these services are provided to the homes or the family members that want to keep their beneficiaries at home. So these services are provided within the home, and it's an alternative to nursing home Some of the services that CAP provides are the personal care services, home accessibility and adaptation, institutional and non-institutional respite services, the telephone life alert systems, durable medical equipment and supplies, community transition, and case management. And some of the ways we collaborate with DSS and the other entities are, we have CAP applicants not currently enrolled in Medicaid. We automatically refer them to Department of Social Services for application processing. If there's CAP applicants in need of nutritional supplies such as Lucerno or Ensure, things of that nature, we also refer them to Department of Aging for assistance. Special assistance in-home, applicants currently on our waitlist and are not receiving CAP services, we can refer them as well to SA in-home for assistance because they can receive those services until their name comes off the waitlist for CAP services. And then if suspicion of abuse, neglect, or exploitation is observed, then the social workers automatically refer to Adult Protective Services for assistance. Are there any questions?
One, this one I want to ask. The last regional meeting I was at, at Council, at Cal, they spoke about introducing a wheel program for the elderly, where they could come in and start doing the preparation for wheels. Have we tried to implement that piece of it yet? It was, they had, they got a program that we talked about that they send out, so it caused a whole lot of problems with elderly leaving their homes just because of the property, and they was trying to put a wheel program in place where they could go in and get assistance to put together a wheel. Have we looked at putting that piece in?
I have not heard of that. I don't think that's trickled down to.
No, it was, they were just referring to an attorney, but they.
I don't know that they could practice law.
No, no, they're not going to practice law, but they're going to.
We would refer them to.
Where they would be referred to legal resources to implement a wheel, and I just wanted to, we ever looking at that.
To the council government?
Yeah, to the council government, was putting that in place.
I know that in the past, we have had.
What's it from?
In the past, I have heard of the legal aid services coming out to the individual nutrition sites and the senior centers and assisting people with wheels, but since I've been there, I've not, I've not seen that happen or heard of that.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. They come out and they have tissue with wheels, we need to put one in place.
I know they've done it, they've done it with, I mean, their nutrition site, somebody to come in and help us with their wheels.
We have Janet Miller, Social Work Program Manager with DSS.
In our adult services unit at Social Services, we do provide a number of services, most of which are mandated services by the state. We do provide intake, screening, and referral to any resources that we're aware of and any new ones that we hear about. We try to maintain that information and share it with folks who have questions. We do provide adult protective services. I'd like to take the opportunity to make sure everyone in the room understands that those, you know, the social workers that work at DSS do not make the decision about whether an older person has to leave their home or not, that there are a lot of people in play for that decision to be made. It's not unusual for our social workers to go into a home, and that's the first thing we hear is, "Well, I know you're here just to take me out of my home," and that's not what we try to do. You know, our priority is to keep them at home as long as we can, but there are occasions when it's necessary. Sometimes they're not able to make decisions for various health reasons, you know, that they're struggling with, and in order to protect them, we have to have them get some supervision on a twenty-four-hour basis, but it involves court orders, it involves, you know, court involvement, and it involves doctors and, you know, all kinds of health professionals in that decision. So I really would prefer that folks not be afraid of us. Most of the time when we get involved in the situation, it's generally a blessing to that family, so I would like to change that perception. We also provide guardianship services, which is another legal process should we have an individual, and this could be anyone age eighteen and older that we're talking about, who for whatever reason are not able to make competent decisions for themselves. We can petition the clerk's office, and they will hold a hearing with proper medical advice and family input. Decision might be made that that person actually needs a guardian to manage their affairs and make decisions for them. So that's what our guardianship services are. We work really, really hard when we're in that process to find a family member to serve. It may not be the Department of Social Services, it may be someone that loves and cares about that individual. So that, there's another example of our involvement, our support with the families, as well as an older disabled person. We also serve a great role in the community in helping folks when they're seeking facility placement for a family member. We, the state of North Carolina has a website that actually lists their Division of Health Service Regulation, those are my boys, that also will give you some information about how that facility's been performing, how much review the state has done, and our accounting resources as well, trying to make sure that all of those minimum regulations are met, that they have appropriate staffing, that their medication management is handled appropriately. So we try to work with families that are trying to make that decision and try to smooth that process out, make it a little bit seamless. It has become more complicated over the years than it used to be, so it is sometimes difficult for family to be able to navigate that on their own. Our special assistance in-home program, which we talked a lot about tonight, is one of the greatest things I've seen, you know, in my thirty-some-odd years of working with older adults. It gives individuals who qualify for Medicaid an opportunity to, if there's special needs that they have, to be able to remain in their home. It actually puts a little bit of additional money, and we manage that with them to help make sure they can stay at home. So it functions a little bit like our CAP program, only those individuals don't need skilled nursing care, so that's the biggest difference with it. Give you an example of some things that we've done with that program. We have older couples, and say, one of the spouses passes away, and they've been living on kind of limited income. All of a sudden, with the spouse gone, the other member of that household can't afford to live there. They can't pay the utility bills, they can't pay, if there's still a mortgage payment sometimes. So that program can help in those situations. One of our services that's not mandated is our Representative Payee Program, and that is where we actually manage Social Security income for individuals who are at great risk of being taken advantage of. Some of them, we have already found that they've been taken advantage of, so this is just a further effort to try to protect them and their resources. There are some other alternatives for that. Social Security does have several agencies that will provide that service as well, but if it's somebody that lives in our county and we're already working with them, it's a lot easier, I think, for them to get used to working with a social worker. So some of those folks, we do maintain and become payee for them. Any other questions about any of that?
I do. I hear everything for those who are on Medicaid, but we have a lot of seniors here who are just above the threshold.
Yes, ma'am.
Of one dollar, twenty-five dollars, and these are seniors on Medicaid. Is it anything for them? Are these services there for them as well?
It, some of these services are very limited for folks that do not have Medicaid, and we will talk about that a little bit with an additional slide that we sort of prepared among the three of us.
Okay, then I will.
But one thing I will say about that is there are some Medicare in-home services that can be provided, but they tend to be, they have to be medically focused, ordered by a physician, and they sometimes are very short-lived, and it might be for like a particular medical episode that happened, that they might be able to get some service for a few weeks or a few months. So there's not long-term care that's very helpful with Medicare for at-home individuals, but.
If DSS is the Representative Payee, do you charge the recipient?
No, sir, we do not. The other agencies do. One of the things that I can say about the three different members that were here tonight is any of us that are involved with an individual, all of those cases or those homes, they're reviewed for any signs or symptoms of abuse and neglect or exploitation. And when we're talking about neglect, sometimes it's not just, you know, a caregiver has done something wrong, or they've neglected to do something for a person. Some of us unfortunately neglect ourselves, and so we do, probably the majority of the reports that we receive and respond to are really about self-neglect. There's not a caregiver. You know, the individual is just neglecting to take care of certain things for themselves, so that's a little bit different than the perception sometimes as well. Some of the things that we do, we refer to the Division of Aging for in-home aid services. I understand that is a great need in the county, and it is limited. I think there is a waiting list for that service. Any nutritional needs, we refer to the Division of Aging. We do refer to CAP very often and work very closely to make sure if there are people on their waiting list, that we try to provide some of these other services to them while they're waiting. We do referrals for wheelchair rants and minor home repairs to the Division of Aging if we can address that, especially in-home. Sometimes it's to a community group who might be able to do that as well. And we, of course, do Medicaid applicants, that, applications at the Department of Social Services office, but if there are any individuals that we're working with that are receiving services at Division on Aging, we may have them do a Medicaid application as well. One of the things Dr. McLauren's brought up is our limitations to services. We all have limitations to what we can do, and as she pointed out, that there is, there are individuals who are just over the income for Medicaid, and then there are individuals who are sufficiently endowed with income, and they can purchase services for whatever need, and then we have folks who sort of fall in that gap, and it's really, really tough to find much help for them. A lot of times what we end up trying to do with those individuals is try to pull a community team together, you know, see if there's some folks in the church that can come and help them a day or two, or maybe there's some family members that can take turns coming to sit with that individual or help them do things at home. We also have kind of a limited source of volunteers and sometimes limited contractor sources when we're trying to do home repair work in the county, and this has been a problem for a number of years. Don't know if there's anyone on the habitat, sometimes struggles, you know, to get volunteers to do house, so it's an ongoing problem. We do have waiting lists for a lot of our services, but currently at Social Services, there are no waiting lists for any of those programs. And if you wanted to speak on any of the others, we have waiting lists for all of our programs, which is really tragic that we do.
So when you say long, I mean, a waiting list, how long do they stay? Month, year?
Some months.
Months. Three months, six months?
Three months, six months, twelve months.
Can I ask a question? I have. Mr. Chairman, I got a question. You might have answered this, but do we have service citizens that need assistance however due to the county funding, and you cannot help them?
Most of our funding for direct services that we're talking about is really based on state funding and federal funding, and those funds are limited. We have even seen some of them be under constant threat to be cut, even at the federal level at this point, so it's, the majority of those funds are actually coming from state resources, and then there is the match that the county government provides, but.
Mr. Dogg, is there a criteria for same services? Is it sixty-five?
Sixty.
They can then come in and like get food, like I see, I've heard some up there, I got sixty-five dollars worth of food stamps, and I'm trying to figure out how can a person live off sixty-five dollars for a month? Are they eligible once they get in that category to come in and ask for the meals and those type of things? So they could just call you?
Absolutely. Anyone sixty years old, they can call, and they can come in, and we have, you know, some paperwork that we have to fill out, and as long as we, depending on what sites they need to go to, as long as we don't have that site full to capacity, we can go ahead and let them start going. But the sites that are full to capacity, we have waiting lists for those sites.
But could the ones inside the city limit, could they get the frozen meals or the hot meals, and would that be delivered to them?
Inside the city limits, they can get hot meals delivered. Outside of the city limits, they get frozen meals that they have to come and pick up, and these are seniors that have to be homebound, meaning they can go out to a doctor's appointment, that's pretty much it. They have to be literally homebound seniors.
Do you have any sites that are not full?
I do have some sites that are not full.
What are they?
They are East Arcadia, Kelly, and the Baltimore Center in Council.
All right, thank you.
When you say, I understand you're, you won't be homebound, but if you're ninety years old, live by yourself, don't drive, are you not considered?
Well, that's where you have, it comes into play with the family members. If their family members are coming in, taking you out, you know, if you're able, I know several of my seniors that are well into their nineties that are able to get out and about, go shopping, get their hair done, go to church every Sunday.
I know, but the ones who don't?
The ones who don't are considered homebound.
So they can't? Because all they do is go to doctor?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So they can get meals?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. There, since that, Vicki made that presentation, they are meeting, and going to meet again this month to see how we as a county can assist or how we can make things better, so they're constantly meeting, and more to come, I guess, is what's there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Health and Human Services, David Howard.
So, A, just a few additions that have been made to the Order of Business for the Health and Human Services Advisory Committee, which are adding invocations, pledge allegiance, and member conservative comments to the Order of Business, which is basically the standing agenda of the Health and Human Services Advisory Committee.
So move. My question is, Congress, I say, from this privy, any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? B.
All right, B is, consider approving vital records policy revision. Only two revisions have been made. Number one was simply a name change from previous health records to my name as official director of vital records, and also changing the frequency of the reports from monthly to weekly, and that's it.
So move.
Second.
Much obliged, Mr. Britt, second by Dr. Othie Mungorton. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, C is consider approving an agreement between Bladen County Health Department and Robson County Health Department regarding WIC programs. What this involves, if you have a chance to scan through this, is simply sending one of our two nutritionists to Robson County to help them because they need assistance from nutritionist work. Were able to spare that person one day a week, it helps us a small amount financially because our budget has been cut slightly this year versus last year, so from a financial and salary standpoint, it helps us a little bit, and since we're able to spare her that one day a week, we are proposing that we enter into this agreement with them. I'll look through the contract, the attorneys have looked through it, we did make that one change, make it simply one year instead of a renewal option. Also, one of the items mentions that if she's not able to make it for some reason, we send and substitute. So I spoke to Amy, our Director of WIC, and I said, "Well, is that okay?" Because if you call in sick, then you're not there on that day, then we have to send our other nutritionist. She said, "Well, that shouldn't be a problem," and so I figured that with her as well, in case that was a question.
So all of that will be how it would come to you?
Yes.
Much obliged, Mr. Gooden, second by Mr. Britt. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm 12, the Sheriff's Department. I will tell you that Sheriff Victor's in Bladen County, there was some break-ins there and he was on, in Bladen County, I mean, Bladenboro was the one I lived. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir. First off, unrelated to this, I want to announce that the Sheriff's Office, we've moved to our new facility, to 99 Smith Circle, so we're operating out of that facility now. And that brings us to the point we're at tonight. We're asking to consider a public hearing on the August 7th meeting to amend the county's smoking ordinance. We're not coming out as proponents for smoking, but we've raised a little issue out there in that our employees are having to stand on the shoulder of the road, there's no sidewalk, and it's a taking concern. So what we're asking is a tweak in the ordinance that would allow smoking in excess of 200 feet from a county-owned building. And if we can do that, we've got a wooden area where we can set up a smoking area there that wouldn't affect anyone. So we're just asking for a public hearing, enter next.
I'm entertaining a motion to have a public hearing, August 7th.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Britt, make the motion, second by Mr. Gooden. Need to review the smoking policy and look at the changes that are highlighted, that's what we'll talk about and discuss August 7th. Any questions asked? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. County manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like to briefly review the calendars for the months of July and August. With you mentioned this Wednesday, the 19th, at 6:30 PM, the Bladen County Committee of 100 Annual Dinner will be held at the Kepir Winery and Vineyard. The NACO Annual Conference will be held in Columbus, Ohio later this week and into early next week. Next, Thursday, the 27th, from 6 until 9, the Summer Sounds Concert Series continues at the Farmer's Market. Moving over to the month of August, on Monday, the 7th, at 8:00 AM, there's a prayer service here that morning. At 6:30 that evening, the Board of Commissioners has a regular meeting here. On Thursday, the 10th, there, there are several items on the calendar. The first is, that's the beginning of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Annual Conference that will be held in Durham County. Also, that evening, there's a Summer Sounds Concert Series, and at 7:00 PM, the Bladen County Fire Association meeting will be held at the Kelly Fire Department that evening. The association conference runs through Sunday morning. The board has a regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, the 21st, at 6:30 PM, and then the last of the Summer Concert Series at the Farmer's Market will be held on the 22nd. And while you all have your calendars out, if we could jump over straight to item B, there's a request to schedule a special meeting for 5:00 PM on Monday, August 7th, 5:00 or 5:15 sometime in the early, before our next regularly scheduled meeting, and that will be to meet at the Lawn Enforcement Center and for the sheriff to have an opportunity to provide a tour, but specifically to look at the evidence storage facility and that process and to review that in detail with you because that certainly is a matter of importance. And so, so there may be a need to go into closed session during that meeting, so, but the location would be there, so that's something that...
That work for everybody? The location, you do the closed session at D.
Yes, sir. We call the meeting to order and then if that's necessary, to discuss that.
Much obliged, Mr. Britt, second by Mr. Gooden. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
5:00.
5:00? Uh, 7:00.
At the Sheriff's.
At the New Jail.
Thank you, thank you. Moving to item C. You know, the opioid epidemic is certainly a major issue, not just in Bladen County, but throughout our state and country. I do want you to know that we're moving forward with a forum here in Bladen County. We have had a, had a brief meeting with the chairman and Health and Human Services Director, David Howard. We have established a small planning committee that's going to meet on the 25th to develop an agenda and invite these to a, to a larger forum that will be held here in the coming months, and so we're starting to keep you all, keep you all posted on that. An opioid forum.
You said the point of view, what was that?
That's just, that's a small, a planning committee of different agency officials to, you're starting to...
Is this the one that the commissioners are asking to be done? Because I think we've talked about the last two months about the prices and the NACO was asking that commissions would need this charge and bringing all them together.
Right.
So that, the same...
That, that is, it's the North Carolina Association.
That means August is...
Well, July 25th. We don't have, this is just a small, this is just a planning committee.
You like point two.
Come up with an agenda, we'll come back to you all and get your feedback and getting input in the bottom of 10:00.
10:00, where's the location?
10:00.
So, great, this is a planning session, so we...
Right. And anybody as well, I know we couldn't have more than four commissioners, but any commissioner can, and, and again, we can report back to the board on what we're thinking and then have an opportunity for any feedback and additional input or whatever.
For them to show up.
This is just trying to get, get moving forward, is, is the purpose is made. So I'll certainly come back and report to you on that.
Okay.
And then item D, I want to report to you that the girls, the Bladen County Girls 12 and Under softball All-Star Team was, was successful. They won the sectional tournament at the state level and went on to the state tournament this past weekend. They actually came in third place, so they didn't, unfortunately, they didn't, they didn't win, but they did well and they won the, the county, as you all know, Parks Recreation has a, basically a policy, the county provides assistance for teams when they travel a certain distance to a state tournament, and so that amount of $500 was provided to that team and they are certainly thankful, and I just wanted to report to you, they, they represented Bladen County well.
Do you need to vote on it?
We could, I mean, they're, they're...
We'll make a motion that we... Much obliged, Mr., we usually vote on them.
That's, that's fine.
I'll make a motion, just a second. Much obliged, Del, second by Mr. Britt. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Item 15, closed session, considering a closed session, courts in SCD, 43, there's 3111. A, real attorney-client privilege. Mr. Gooden, second by Mr. Britt. Any discussion? Individuals, individuals...
Yes, ma'am. It's...
I gotta go. Hold the court, what do you call the...
You see, buddy? Yes, sir. I'll see, man. I'll see. Yes, ma'am. Good to see, how are you doing? Doing okay, Dorsey? Keeping the big tree?
Three months, I guess.
Yeah.
Three months, I guess.
Yeah.
Two seconds. You're awake? You know we sleep with our eyes open.
My son's right.
He's awake.
You know we sleep with our eyes open.